I'm gonna call the November 26th, 2019, meeting of the Concord Planning Board to order. My mother's birthday.
Happy birthday!
So, but anyway, in our first order of business, oh, well, I should also mention this meeting is being videotaped. And you're welcome to make your own recording. Susan Bates is in the audience, because you're a lead member of the audience. But if you do, let us know. So, the first item of business is the open meeting law complaint that we received. That's what I thought.
It was the 7:00 AM or 7:00 PM?
Oh, excuse me!
It's this new formatting.
Yeah, yeah, I think I get, I got stuck because I just saw the number one and I just, okay, sorry. So, let's go back. Our first order of business.
This is very brief.
Okay, yeah.
At the last meeting, the property owner for 159 Sobury came to the board and had a good conversation. And then they were directed to go talk to the letter.
Yeah.
That was supposed to happen on Monday, and nobody's gotten back to me, so...
There isn't anything to talk about?
There's nothing to talk about, except should, and I imagine they'll be on the agenda for next time if they talk to somebody. But the one thing I did want to bring to the board's attention is that if the board does decide to put forth a warrant article to amend the boundary line, it's gonna be my recommendation that you fix it over here as well. This is the gas station.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
And so, just fix it so it runs along with the property lines.
Okay, thank you.
That's so curious, isn't it?
How the district originally got laid out, it's a certain distance from the road.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, that's all. So, that would...
So, I presume that gas station then has a special permit as well of some sort to be able to operate or its grandfather?
It's more than likely legal nonconforming.
Yeah.
But that's gonna be my recommendation. If the board is gonna change the maps, just fix the map on that side as well.
Yeah.
This side was already fixed at some time.
Yeah, you can see the parking lot.
So, that's my update. So, it might reappear on your next agenda as well.
Okay.
I guess in question, I mean, with the same logic that we thought that they would ask the butter immediately to Jason, do we feel like we need any other butters for expanding that? And it's a little bit different circumstances because we know that the expansion is related to essentially moving the driveway over and all that. But, I mean, I don't think it's necessary, but since I raised the issue.
I don't think it's necessary for these because it's just correcting.
Yeah.
It's just correcting it.
Will they be noticed or anything?
If the board decides to move forward, yeah, I will approach those two property owners, yes.
Is that 153, is that, is that?
One, this one?
Yeah, those are apartments.
Those are apartments.
Yeah.
Rental apartments.
Yeah, and it's interesting, there are two parcels, but that's one complex.
Yeah.
Right. And isn't the house that's next to, isn't that also like a dentist's office?
No, that's this one.
I think, well, no, but I think it used to be.
It could, I think it was.
And commercial.
Is that a chiropractic?
So, I thought there was something in there.
But it appears not to be kind of...
I thought maybe now it's just a house.
Does that not count as a business?
Vaguely remember there being something there.
Or is that the home occupation?
Okay.
Uh-huh.
Learned so much.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So, should we move on then to administrative business? And now, we can discuss the open meeting law complaint. So, we got this complaint from Tanya Galis of 62 Prescott Road. There is, as explained on the complaint form, what we need to do now is disseminate the complaint across the board members, which we've done, to meet and review the complaint, which we're doing right now. And then, to write up a response. And we can delegate that to a member of staff. But we need to discuss this and come to our consensus as far as our response. So, yeah, and we can ask for more time if we need more time.
In terms of the scope of the response, do we have a sense of, should it be to rebut the points in the complaint, to address other steps we might take?
Well, that's the point of our discussion, yeah. Yeah, so, I don't know if people have input that they'd like to make. I have opinions.
I have opinion.
Okay.
Share.
Sure.
I think that the, well, there were a couple of elements to it. One of which was that I think that the basis of our decision was brought forth late in the process and not reflected in the minutes. The basis of the decision purporting to be that it was better than a subdivision. And I think that that misconstrued the conversation. I don't think that was the basis of the decision. Certainly, when I went back and looked at the video of myself, what I said was, because as we know, we need, in these PRDs, part of it is considering the surrounding neighborhood. And I said that when I compared to the, not hypothetical unsubmitted subdivision, but the actual subdivision immediately next door and immediately across the street, that I thought that this model of development with the clustered houses and the preservation of the house in front was preferable. Now, that being said, that still was not the...
Reason for the approval.
The central reason for the approval.
Yeah, right.
It was based upon me thinking that they met the other requirements for PRD and having made a lot of different adjustments. So, the fact that that wasn't reflected in a minute, I didn't think missed the point of certainly what my input in the meeting was.
Okay. Other perspectives?
I guess I just add that, just from my own understanding, as we deliberate, we're deliberating on the entire record. And that, so as we do so, the basis of a decision isn't just the discussion that takes place in here, but is everything that's part of the record, including the applicant's materials and including the comments from the public and including Elizabeth's report that she writes up for us, that she turns into a recommendation. So, is that correct?
When you're deliberating on your recommendation to the Board of Appeals, it is based on the entire record of what you have been provided through written material, presentations, and anything that's in the record for the application, correct?
Okay.
Just another point was there was this discussion as to whether we'd taken a vote or not.
Yes. Well, we had an opportunity, I think, to review the comments on the draft minutes about that point. And I think we, as a group, looked at the draft minutes and determined that they were accurately reflecting what happened. Right? I mean, I don't know. Did you have a different opinion?
I may not have been here for that review of the draft.
Oh, okay.
But my recollection and having refreshed myself by watching the video is that we, you sort of did a, let's see, a show of hands of where we're going and whether we should direct the planner to prepare a draft letter of recommendation.
Right.
At which point, we would have a formal vote to approve the letter of recommendation.
Right. But we got a sense of the board.
Right, and in fact, then when we came back for our final deliberation, that was the following meeting.
Right.
We met, we deliberated, we had a vote. We did not take public comment at that point.
That's right.
So, as to whether that constituted the vote or not, it seemed to be to be a business practice we've done in the past of providing the planner direction as to whether we're ready to move on to the formalities of a vote, but it was not the vote itself.
Right.
And do we have a convention in the minutes on whether we call out, when we call out a vote as a vote? That it's always a formal vote versus we don't do that for straw pulls?
No, but we did note that, we did take that.
Understood.
Yeah.
But we didn't, but in terms of recording it as a vote, as we typically record a vote, we have a convention that's only calling out the votes that are formal votes.
Yeah.
Because they are moved and seconded and voted upon.
Understood, right.
And they know who does each of those things.
We do that consistently.
Yeah. I'd like to make one more comment about the alternative to a subdivision thing, which is if you look at 10.1, the purpose of the planned residential development bylaw, the very first sentence says, "Planned residential development allows, by special permit from the board, an alternative pattern of residential land development." So, it is by its nature always an alternative to what otherwise would be the de facto pattern of development, which is more often than not would be a subdivision. Now, I also agree with Burton that, you know, again, while I think the context of a PRD application is always as an alternative to a conventional plan, that it wasn't the crucial thing that made the decision. It was a lot of changes to the plan to improve the, especially for me, the most crucial thing was the change to the streetscape and the preservation of structures, which you absolutely cannot take for granted. And that I consider to be a very great outcome for this project, even though there are many other little details I would rather see different, quite a few details, in fact, that I'd rather see different. But that's true of every PRD.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that was, we perhaps learned a lesson in speaking freely when some people might be hanging on every word, but that wasn't part of my deliberative process at all, comparing it against. I couldn't tell you how many houses could have gone in if it had been a subdivision. I couldn't tell you with the lots, if it met the minimum lot sizes, anything like that. I didn't consider that really at any point. I mean, and specifically, I wasn't comparing it against what subdivision could join there.
Well, and there, that's the other thing, is that I wasn't speculating about any particular division of the property other than just that the fact that a subdivision divides a lot into conforming parcels, regardless of what proposal that is, how many lots there are, whatever. And that just that is a pattern of development versus something that preserves open space and preserves structures. And it, you know, and the sightline from the street, that's superior in my mind.
And stepping back is to the crux of the open meeting law complaint,
Yeah.
I think was that the minutes themselves did not reflect the deliberation in a way that according to the requirements of the open meeting law, a reasonable observer would be able to come back later and interpret what business was undertaken and how a decision was made. We have, what, seven meetings, however many meetings we've had on this project, which did change over time, but we were raising the same issues, asking the same questions, comparing it against the same sections of the bylaw throughout that process. I think our deliberative process was clear and the basis for our decision was clear. I don't think there's anything that comes anywhere remotely close to hiding the ball on how the decision was made such that a reasonable person couldn't come along later and determine from looking at the meetings why the planning board decided to do what it did.
Yeah.
So, I think the complaint is without merit.
Any?
Just one more thing, and I would hope that we would be able to speak freely as, because, especially because of the open meeting laws, which we all abide by. We don't informally have the opportunity to gather and practice and understand like exactly what we want to say. So, for someone like myself who is new on the board, I might want to think about the requirements and the context and the environment of the requirements, which might be something like, well, why is this requirement exist in the first place? Well, it's because what the alternative. And so, I just would hope that we would be able to be, speak freely and not feel as if this was, we're in a judicatory setting that we would need to...
And by the way, I should mention that the, yeah, that the courts have found that because they realize we're volunteers, we're not professionals, we're, you know, that there's a looser set of criteria around, you know, what we have to, I mean, we have to, of course, fulfill open meeting law, we do. But that, you know, in terms of every little detail having to be what, you know, an attorney would consider, okay, that's perfect, we can't be held to that standard because we don't know enough.
Well, and I also think that discussing, for example, I mean, there's nothing in there that says you cannot consider how this compares to a hypothetical subdivision. There are requirements in the statute for approving a PRD.
Yeah.
Having discussions about...
And we walked through all of them.
That's right. Repeatedly brought us back to that.
Whatever it may be, we can have that discussion ultimately. And I think, you know, just my takeaway on this is our decisions have to be based upon and find, and find support in what the planning regulation, the bylaw provides for the basis of the decision. You know, does it meet this criteria, that criteria, the other criteria? We've looked at other issues, like what comes to mind, and another one that was a very high-profile one was before your time, we were looking at some cell towers, right? There's pretty specific requirements that it needs to meet or not meet. The proponent needs to put forth their argument for it. And we considered it solely on those points. I think with an eye to knowing because of prior litigation in the town, that we needed to get those points right. And we couldn't certainly be irrational or arbitrary in making our decision. In the case of a PRD, one of the things that's different about a PRD than a subdivision is I think that there is, there are more words and phrases in the bylaw that refer to things like, it's not the word, but, you know, neighborhood character or, you know, those kinds of things, which are inherently subjective. And I think that discussion should be free-ranging, which is a little bit of how we've tripped upon this current situation. I was making a subjective comparison to other developments existing in the neighborhood. I don't see that as being disqualifying, but it wasn't also the basis of my decision. I just wanted to iterate it for the third time.
And I think that's the most important part about when it says in the complaint, what action do you want the public body to take? And the changes suggesting seem to want them to change, us to change, our reason for recommendation. And I think we've all agreed this was not the reason for the recommendation. Subdivision would be worse.
Well, it wasn't my reason for sure.
I mean, I think that the reason, the reason for recommendation is because of the criteria in there. And thank goodness we have Elizabeth.
Yeah. Thank goodness we have a tape recording. So, at this point, to, and the only other, I believe the only other point in here had to do with statements that I made at a Board of Appeals meeting, which...
Isn't here.
Which is not part of your minutes.
Yeah.
So... If the board wants to provide their...
Okay, and then, I don't know if it's worth going down the list.
Sorry, on which point?
The point in here that the town planner made comments at a Board of Appeals meeting regarding a vote of the planning board. I'm not sure how that is an open meeting law violation for the planning board or your minutes.
Yeah, I don't think it's something that we have to think about, yeah.
So, we would want to address that in our response.
So, the response should be that it's not pertinent to planning boards.
That, for on that point.
Okay.
I don't know if it's worth going down this public body checklist for creating or approving meeting minutes. I mean, it'd be kind of tedious to do so. I think that, you know, it just, I think we meet the criteria, is all I'm gonna say. There's a list of things that, you know, we have to do for minutes.
I'm astounded at the level of detail and the amount of information that goes into our meeting minutes. As a secretary for several corporations who's taken a lot of minutes in my life, I can tell you that our minutes are verbose, lengthy, and detailed. So, and compared to, you know, when it comes to open meeting law, I'm on the CPC committee, and I think our minutes are equal to that, though, you know, that's also planning staff that prepares those, and they do an excellent job, so I don't think we need to bolster them.
At this point, if the board would like me to drop the letter for review and signature by the chair...
Do we need to make a motion on that, or?
Oh, sure.
Why? Could you just state your reason? But I, well, let's be formal of it. So, what I would suggest is that we have a vote, we recommend that town planner prepare a letter.
Yeah.
And then, a response, and then we, and just thinking about how we want to, whether...
You can have one, you can have one person review it on behalf of the board.
Yeah.
I think Burton is probably the...
I thought he was a volunteer.
Yeah.
We'll do that.
Thank you, Burton.
Okay, so at this point, we have taken some of Burton's comments about the, it's the board's opinion that the basis of the appeal was, you know, not on the subdivision. It was based, your deliberation and recommendation was based on everything that was in the record. And get to Burton, Burton or Burton's point about, and Matt's point in the purpose of the PRD, it's an alternative form, and, you know, there was no comparison of this project to a subdivision.
A specific subdivision.
Of this property.
Right.
In, but, you know, general terms, that's the purpose for a PRD is an alternative form.
Of development.
Of development. And then, and then there was Burton's point about the deliberative process.
And the vote.
The vote includes the...
The question that they...
Question of a vote.
The vote to recommend happened on the 24th versus the 10th.
Oh, for the vote, yes.
I'm not sure I understand the materiality of that, but the point being, I thought our formal vote happened on the 24th. We recommended to you that you, that you prepare a letter for us to consider.
And we did even review the draft minutes in light of this, you know, comments that were made and determined that they were properly written.
Okay, so, no, I think I have enough to pull a letter together. I think this was filed on November 18th. The board has, what, 14 days?
Business days, hopefully.
I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to check.
Let's see if there's, what it says here.
14 business days.
14 business days.
Okay.
Well, we've got 14 days to review the complaint, and then after review, we've got 14 days to file a response.
Okay, so I just, I just wanted to make sure with the holiday that there, because I won't be able to do this till next week.
Yeah, I mean, we should have it until the middle of December.
Nine floors up from May at work. Okay, so, next week I'll have this to Burton to review.
Okay.
Were we gonna vote on that? Do you want to vote on that?
Oh. Hey, motion, I'll entertain a motion.
That we asked the planner to prepare a response letter based upon the points of our discussion this evening, and that she circulated that to me to review it on behalf of the board with time to submit it within 14-day business days from today.
Second?
A second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? All right, passed unanimously. Okay, so, let's move on now to the discussion of our November 21st zoning forum that we held last week. And what do people think?
I've gotten actually comments back from people that they, they thought it was really good.
All right.
And very helpful at this stage.
I thought it was very helpful thinking of having to potentially present one of those, even though I'm gonna try to, you know, pitch mine to the moderator as being totally non-controversial. But if I have to present them in a town meeting, I mean, we had, you know, two groups of about 15 people, and they, and they, and they each asked at least three questions that were the same in each, in each group, which was like, oh, well, that's exactly what we need to be prepared for because those are the concerns. And a couple of them were, in fact, things that were raised that we, I don't think had come up in our consideration of the article previously. So, it was really valuable.
That was accessory dwelling.
For the viewing audience, your group was...
Accessory dwelling units, yeah. And people were asking about what would it mean to increase an impervious paving? If you were essentially increasing the number of residents, it could be utilizing the same lot. What was, do you remember another one?
One unusual one was what if, it was built on a trailer, like a tiny house on a trailer. And so, the building codes that applied to that, kind of just making sure we understood that.
And, yeah, there was one more.
Kind of how would you enforce owner occupied?
Oh, yeah, that was the other big question.
And Marcia addressed that kind of while she was in our group while we were there too. And then, parking.
Yeah.
Parking. So, yeah, definitely got good things and hopefully, I mean, there wasn't a lot of feedback in terms of shaping it, but more like just kind of asking how we arrived at our square footage and did we think, you know, basically, did we think it was gonna serve the purpose? But certainly a lot of support.
Yeah, not that it was a representative of the larger town meeting audience, but it was, it seemed, there were people who were really keen about the proposal to do that. And specifically, I mean, maybe we framed the question, but specifically talking about how they, that that was a good step to create a market-driven generation of some affordable housing by limiting the square footage.
Yeah.
So...
So, do you see any changes, needed changes to the draft?
What I'd like to be able to discuss further is that parking and impervious surface question. I think that the concern about owner occupancy, Marcia stepped in and talked about how that's currently enforced. So, that would be something that we need to go into the presentation. And I think that the question about trailers, we need to look at our other bylaw on trailers and consider how that would intersect and potentially cause unintended consequences. That's more of just getting an understanding, but it may, I think it is worth further discussion on the impervious surface because I think we need, just need to consider generally whether that could be, you know, whether there could be, you know, parking. I mean, currently, for example, in a single-family house, are there restrictions on, that's conforming, on how parking can be laid out? There's nothing.
No, somebody can, they could pave their whole.
Pave their whole.
Because they don't even have a, they don't even have a, what's the water runoff?
Stormwater.
Stormwater.
No.
See, and that would be one of the ways that I would suggest maybe going after this is rather than take it on as part of the accessory dwelling, would be look at low-impact development, stormwater bylaw, you know, for the town, you know, for residential stormwater. We've talked about it for a few years, and while it wouldn't be directly attacking that, it would, I think, help reduce the impacts.
You know, I think there was a concern that especially in some, in the 10,000 square foot zone areas that, I mean, I loved Summerville, but there's a lot of paved yards that are paved to the corners there with, you know, parking everywhere but where the house is. And I think that was a concern, and I don't know how, like you said, I think it's beyond the scope of the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, but...
Well, I mean, not, so, if, if you, if it's a concern that was raised in both forms and, you know, is, is part of the, you know, the climate change and sustainability and that discussion in the community, not addressing it now, yes, later on, you could, you know, decide to move forward with some type of residential stormwater bylaw, but, you know, that you're talking a couple of years away, and everything that, you know, came through before that wouldn't apply. So, you know, the, between, you know, now and you have two meetings in December, there is the possibility for a, another meeting January 7th, if you had to. The warrant closes on the 10th. I mean, you can think about, and I also think it was parking, number of parking, so not requiring two spaces for the accessory dwelling, you know, requiring, you know, a maximum of one or one additional space.
Is there, so is there a parking requirement for a controlling house?
Two, two spaces per dwelling unit is the, is the requirement in the zoning bylaw.
So, then, yeah, well, but... So then, yeah, well, but.
We definitely don't want accessory dwellings to have to have two additional spots.
We don't want that, but then you can't really say, it it it's a man, it's a minimum. So you can't really say then the accessory dwelling unit has a maximum very, because you could say, oh, well, the primary house, I decided to have four spaces.
Well, but, I mean, you can say that the, you know, accessory dwelling unit, you know, a minimum of one parking space and. You know, not, not everybody wants to pave over and you can say that that one parking space shall be an impervious surface.
You mean a pervy, a pervious service?
A pervious service, yes, sorry. So you can, I mean, you can add that to the bylaw as a.
I think that's, we should give consideration to that. It was raised by a number of people. Both both as a concern about overall parking and traffic, but also the uh the resiliency aspect.
Um and then I can tell you to um that this came up actually, um let's see, Monday. Yeah, uh the finance director was just notified by D O R that towns can request. Um a list from D O R of um all the people who ha- are registering and paying. Um tax under Airbnb's.
Oh, wow.
Um so they can provide a town a list of anybody in the town. Um so that email was forwarded to the building commissioner. Um and so there was a concern with accessory dwellings that people are just gonna do them and, you know. Have them be rented for Airbnb's and so we now actually have a mechanism that. The building commissioner can get this list, send out a courtesy notice saying you you're on this list, you need to file for. A special permit for bed and breakfast.
Right.
So that, you know, the butters can be notified and um so there now is a mechanism to be able to monitor that. Which up until, up until now, it was only um if somebody filed a zoning complaint, the building commissioner would actually go on Airbnb.
Oh, I have to search for that.
Look at the picture, see if it's the picture of the zoning violation, so it was, it was definitely not intuitive.
Yeah.
The the only other thing that came up and I don't, I don't wanna take too much on this, cause it does seem to be much more straightforward than the PRD and things like that was. Um one mention that, which made sense to me, that if you can obtain by special permit. Uh thousand square foot, then the thought was, well, everybody's gonna do that because they can and it's more square footage and.
It's a lot of work, it takes some time.
Was the response.
Yeah.
Our response was the work and the cost, the additional cost was hopefully the deterrent to keep everybody from doing that.
I mean, not every house is really in a position to put a thousand square, I mean, you know, you can't stay within the. F A R and, you know, in some cases, so.
And perhaps a counter to that a little bit is is once you go into special permit territory, you're kind of dealing with the status quo today. Right, and um in terms of how how many people are gonna utilize the mechanism of of building an accessory dwelling unit? There are other restrictions, right? This allows it to be outside the footprint of the existing house and whatnot, but we're not seeing a lot of that today. The idea here is to do it by right and there was one person there who I'm guessing that was quite familiar with the feasibility of this maybe in. You know, contractor or developer and he said, this is great, removing the hurdle of the special permit will make this so much more cost. You know.
Yeah.
The economics work.
Yeah.
He was in one group and it was the next group that really raised concern of of pushing it.
He he seemed to think that any excessive, anything would be limited by the building code, so that would kind of take care of. Um anything that, that would be enough hurdles. So the byright was good, all right, that's.
So for um for that one, if, you know, if there's any changes you want to the draft bylaw. For next time, not sure you're gonna be, you know, um we might look at having you do your bylaw discussion. As your first item for your.
Well, I don't know, for the sake of the public, I I think it's actually better to do that first. Uh do do the the PRD application first.
Um so if you wanna just get back to me with any suggested actual changes to the draft bylaw.
Yeah, you've given me some stuff to think about, so I'll go look at. Yeah. Does anybody else have any thoughts on the parking, what would be an appropriate way to to provide that kind of restriction to me?
I did have the same thought you already mentioned, which was just that if there's not a cap for the main house, they'll just say, okay. We'll put a pervious parking spot over here, but two more, three more or whatever over here that are.
Maybe just fair.
That's still, that's still an additional cost.
Of course, yeah, but you think it's, we should be clarifying that that accessory dwelling unit doesn't require more than one parking space to go with it. So the implication being, you'd think was that it, because it's an additional dwelling unit, that there'd be a requirement for two more spots because. Yeah, so so that seems like a no brainer to fix, that it should be, that it shall only require one.
Okay.
Um then, I I don't see a clean way with putting a cap on it, because if you put a overall cap. You're you're putting a restriction on a property that wouldn't exist on any other properties because it has an accessory dwelling.
Oh, you gotta give up something, sure.
I mean, you could say that you can't have more than some percent increase in impervious surfaces of. Consequence of doing your accessory dwelling.
Sounds like a special permit review.
Yeah, as I say, then somebody's gotta.
Yeah, gotta come up with that, yeah. Okay, yeah, the building commissioner would not like that, I can see it now, okay. Uh Nathan, I I know you had done the reprise of the um two family at the meeting, so maybe you could lead off that.
Yeah, I mean, a couple of the same points, um the parking was an issue, the. Use as a Airbnb type place was an issue, um but I thought in general. Uh similarly what Burton was saying, I thought it was helpful just to get a sense of what people would, you know, outside of this group. Think uh about these ideas at first glance and that helps to inform how we'll talk about it. Leading up to town meeting and for the presentations, um so I thought that was, that was definitely helpful for us. And I did, I I, one of the other things I was thinking of, I don't know about anybody else's, uh but. In in the two groups that we had, there was nobody who was opposed.
To the concept.
Yeah, in in really in any way.
That, eh, right.
Um which was kind of surprising, I I I thought there'd be at least one person in one of the groups who just, you know, by chance.
Yeah, I would say like, I don't want those.
So were there any changes to the two family that kind of to the draft warrant article that kind of rise, rose to the top?
Other than those concerns around how to deal with the increase in impervious surface, which is pretty much a shared concern with the accessory dwellings. The only other one was a former board member who was advocating pretty strongly for adding in residence B. But we told him to be patient and wait until we run this for a while and see how that goes.
Well, I, we actually, in our group, we heard some feedback on your, on on the two family.
Oh, okay.
There's overlap, well, which was, why are we focusing on the already densely populated parts of the town? Why is this being limited to, what is that, A, right?
C.
C.
Yeah.
Why are we focusing on C and when and and other areas? Um which I I think we did that deliberately because that we're focusing on that sort of smart.
Smart growth plan, yeah.
Um but people were worried about an an excess of density in our village centers areas.
But that turned on to a talk about transportation and stuff too, which is good.
Yeah. Yeah, I tried to cover it in the overview, so. Okay, uh then PRDs. Do you guys have lively discussion?
Uh we did, and I also felt it was useful and appreciated um the work that you and Elizabeth did to set it up. Um and people wanted more of what we were doing, like even more aggressive measures. Um there was no one there to express um a concern that we shouldn't be making the PRDs more. Uh aggressive in terms of trying to get maximum open space and um green building and L I D. Um that being said, um. I didn't hear an appreciation or acknowledgement that there's like this tipping point at which. Things could be made so difficult that we um just end up with a subdivision, you know, not to, back to that difficult topic. Um but the fact is, is that that's there and that's the balance that is currently um. We're trying to strike an existing bylaw and when we make changes, I think we need to keep that in mind, um.
So that was a comment that that you and Hallie tried to convey or there were others, there were others in the breakout group that.
Sorry, no, that's something I that I said in the first breakout group and not the second. Um I didn't hear anybody else expressing that concern um or or acknowledging it. Um but, yeah, no, but it was really useful, so there was just a lot of um enthusiasm for. Um increasing the requirement for open space, um being more aggressive or aggressive about um. Having the buildings be. Green building and L I D and efficient and electric, um there was some discussion of a recent bylaw that was passed in Brookline. Um that was tempting to regulate um.
New construction or something?
Fuel use and new construction, um and yeah, so so that's it. So um we're kind of in a different place with the PRD bylaw in terms of where the development of the amendment, so um.
Well, I thi- I I mean, so part of um the whole uh PRD bylaw is. And we can see if Marsha could come back, is the history of the bylaw and when it, you know, first went in. And it wasn't used and then certain things were changed and it started to being, you know, used again. And I think your point that you made to the group, the first group, that um there has, there has to be. Um this balance because if you, if you make it so on- onerous or. It's, it's just as expensive, then then you're not, you're not going to get them. Um and I think the other, as part of the presentation, the other balance is, is that it is. Um impossible to have a project that is, has more open space. Is denser.
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing and compatible with the neighborhood, you know, those four things cannot go together. Um you 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 can, you can have a couple, you can have, you know, one, two. Possibly three, if it was, you know, the perfect project, place and developer, but you you cannot have all four.
Yeah.
Um so I I think that's gonna be a hard, um a hard thing to convey to town meeting. Um and, you know, while having an aspect of more open space and L I D and sustainability and green buildings. Um, you know, is is great, there there's a reality to, you know, the development and. And I'm not sure how you get that across.
And we also don't know exactly where that tipping point is and it's probably different for every property.
Oh, it's definitely different for every property, it's definitely for every different, each different developer.
I do think there are things that we can do to just update this a little bit in terms of where we are with some advancements in um in the economics and green building and L I D. I think it's more economical than it used to be, so I don't, I think we can push a little bit on it, but I agree with your point that we can just.
And it's more attractive from a, you know, for developers to attract people.
Oh, good point.
These homes too, so it's.
Much more demand, especially in this area.
I was gonna say, particularly where you were trying to build, yes.
I I was wondering if maybe we should be pivoting the discussion here from point two of our agenda to point three, which is. Really, you know, maybe we can drill into Hallie's uh proposed changes to our PRD bylaw. And.
Can we talk about process for a second?
Sure.
So, um I thought Elizabeth was issue, gonna issue a recommendation on this. So when I saw Haley's, I was kind of waiting to see Elizabeth's suggestion um before I really looked closely at Haley's. So I just wanted to understand like whether you were gonna issue something that was maybe either marking this up or your own thing.
So that was, that was, you know, I sent, when I saw Haley's, I, you know, sent it to to Matt saying, it's like, okay, well. Uh if if the board goes this direction, this is a completely different style of warrant article. Um it's more of the completely.
Yeah.
Delete sections.
Delete and replace.
Delete and replace, I mean, this is, this is a much harder warrant article to draft than what. I was originally under um from the last discussion, the.
Like strike twenty five percent and put in.
Change that to thirty three, I mean, that that's a completely different, completely different warrant article. Going through the bylaw where it currently says board, you would have to, you would have to say planning board.
Mm hmm.
Um so that's it, so you had um planning board. Um changing the table um to have required site plan, you changed twenty five to thirty three and. And I, and I, site plan, planning board, twenty five to thirty three.
This is.
And then some, some element of.
Of sustainability, so the the green building.
Well, a green L I D and and stormwater.
And the, and the appropriate reference.
Review that?
That's um.
Well, that's, that is also a question I had, is whether site plan review kind of already, since it includes those sustainability criteria, do we kind of get them for free? If we specify site plan.
Yes.
And we don't necessarily have to stick it in here, although I think it does help in the purpose to kind of add that. You know.
Correct.
But the site plan can be more easily amended than this, so if you like.
No, no.
We put this in, it's harder to change than the site.
So currently, under the, under primary uses, if you go.
We have our site plan review criteria in the bylaw.
Yeah, if you go to the table, a PRD, when you get down to site plan approval, of course, PRD says not required.
But it will say yes.
Right, I thought we were, so we're gonna change that to say yes and then.
And then when somebody files, they also have to file under eleven point eight and all A through H of the site plan criteria. Would then have to be analyzed for a PRD.
Just, can you please read the criteria relating to sustainability?
Uh, yeah, H, incorporation of sustainability and resilience principles into the site design. That result in a plan that is responsive to the environment and actively contributes to the development of a more sustainable community.
So it doesn't call out L I D or green building?
Or preservation of trees, that's one thing that keeps coming up in our PRD reviews. Um which, if we're, if if we're doing a cut and replace, I, that would be another thing that I would maybe suggest.
I think that's where Matt's, um I mean, if you're, you're not gonna go to, you know, to Hallie's level.
Sort of, it's on the bottom there.
Add on, you know, take some of the elements from this, I think that's where um, you know, you can. You can add, and I'm, and I'm not sure if it's um principles or um. I'm gonna actually use the current bylaw, um. It's actually would be in um. Um I think you would probably um you have your planning board. It was the, the criteria, where is it? I just have to find it. Oh, um. Yeah, so, under the current section ten four two, planning board report and recommendation. The board has to review the development statement and plans um. And make your rec- uh recommendation and there's. A review of the proposed development, including design, use of the buildings and open space between and around them, pedestrian vehicular circulation. Uh parking, grading, landscaping, trees, landscaping, screening, I mean, you you can add, you know. Preservation of existing. Preservation of existing, so I think there's way to to add into this criteria, those elements, there's also in here. There's a requirement in here regarding the grading.
Now, won't we actually have to rewrite the section of the P R D bylaw where we talk about our planning, you know, our our recommendation? And what our report has to contain and stuff like that, cause now, once we're the permitting authority, we're just gonna. I mean, I wonder if we're already kind of on a path to having to redo section ten, you know? I mean, that by the time you replace all the references to pla- planning board throughout, it's gonna be pretty hard to avoid. Just saying, okay, here's new section ten.
Right, no, I think you you, the bylaw itself will likely get to a point where it's delete in its entirety and adopt.
I think we're gonna have to.
Don't think it's gonna be. I I I think, well, you know, a lot of the points that um Hallie made in here.
Well, actually, I I was hoping to discuss, yeah, I didn't get a chance to write up a a formal response to this, but I did have some feedback on. On these proposed changes.
One of the questions I wanted to ask was in the sustainability section that Haley put together. If we were to do, to do a delete and replace for that section. Is it possible to make references to a table like this that exists somewhere else? So that if it is updated, say. In twenty twenty-four, some new technology comes out and makes our twenty thirty, you know, deadline.
That's preferable.
There rather than having it go through here, so good, then yeah, I would, I would suggest if we were to do that, to make sure that those.
The question would be, the question would be, is there currently a place where that exists now? For you to incorporate into a bylaw amendment for a warrant that closes January tenth. Which I I I don't, I don't know if that currently exists now.
So what, what is the? What is the threshold that needs to be met as something that can be referenced? So can the, can the town itself say? These are goal guidelines, post them on the town website and then the, that reference that.
I bet the climate change sustainability committee would be able to produce that and justify that and publish that. As goals for the town.
I know they've talked about, obviously, housing goals, so.
Could, I mean, is i- is it possible to do it more like to something that's produced by um? Not a part of our municipal operation, something more like lead or some other kind of organization. Green building organization or something that. Is, is there? Do you know what I mean?
Well, so, I I mean, I think at this point, it um I can ask the sustainability director if there currently exists. This table. Elsewhere in the realm of the town. Uh because, I mean, to Nathan's point, it's um, it would be at the 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 second to last sentence. P R D corresponds to the value identified in.
Whatever the source material is.
Yeah, the, you know, the towns. Whatever that source is, um that's, that is always preferable. In a zoning bylaw instead of having a table.
It just makes me really uncomfortable to have this table, dated table. It's really um kind of.
So let me, let me speak to um to the sa- sustainability director and see if there is. And to your point, Kate, the, you know, whether there is some guidance document already out there, whether the state has developed something or.
Is there something that's like lead? For residential buildings that's not quite so. That's something like, you know, a level three rating of this organization, which can. Which might consider like all sorts of things, like lead, how you can get points for different. Do you know about lead?
So let me talk to Kate.
Okay.
So talk to Gary Clyman.
But you know what, do you know what I'm saying in terms of like? Wanting to get, like, have it be certified in some way by um an external organization? And have it be um, like, they get credit for different, we don't need to specify exactly what they need to do, but they get credit for different. Aspects of.
And there is a public reference and it can be dynamic, yeah, it can be updated. Whereas this is. Enshrine in our bylaw and it may look great right now, it might not look great in a while, you know?
For residential, I'm not sure. Wha- what's that? Lead certification for.
So do you want, I mean, would it be? Do you, do you want to go through?
I'd like to go through and make some comments, yeah, I mean, although I don't wanna shut down this discussion that, you know. I I just want, maybe just starting from the top, I thought that it is nice to break out a list in the purpose, but on the other hand. It does uh overlap with and occasionally conflict with what's in the paragraph and so that needs to be rationalized. So I don't have any sort of specific redlining I would wanna do, but I do think that if we gotta. Consolidate it so that it it is consistent.
I completely agree, so my rec- my suggestion to that end would be that we read this, we consider the sentence that exists here, it is intended to encourage.
Right.
And if anything is not included in there that we think we should, should be included, let's include it, so.
Uh then just, you wouldn't have the list.
Exactly.
Okay, just go, because we, yeah, we don't have to do it as a list, it just needs to have all the points.
I don't think we should. I, it, exactly, I think we sh- I think one is not appropriate for the bylaw.
Right.
I'm not sure that we do anything to encourage too. Um I think of open space is already included in the second sentence. Social interaction is interesting, maybe, and then L I D and green building maybe could be added to the second sentence.
Right, I think that those are the main im- improvements.
Why um you think that we don't do enough or don't do anything about number two, conform the development to existing topography and natural features? Cause I think, don't we want to? That's two, two in the bullet. I think theoretically we want to, but I don't know if we've ever developed something that's practical that we are suggesting, uh we try to.
I mean, eh, right now, there is, they will not detract from the ecological and visual qualities of the area. Is already in the language, which is pretty general, you know, but.
The topography issue would be, eh, that's. Isn't that sort of outside of the scope of the P R D, I mean, in terms of determining the maximum building height or, you know, and and doing. If you're re, if you're altering the topography and I'm thinking about elevations, right?
Yeah.
That would be governed by the permissible height of the building based upon the ground before you.
See, I guess I'm thinking of it more like.
Like, oh, you mean if you remove a hill?
Right, that's what I'm thinking of, the changes that. Right, and so, you know, going to the ecological and visual qualities of the area, um and not detracting from it, I do think that's important in terms of. But so when I read the topography and natural features, that to me means you're not making wholesale changes. Just to make room for something new, and so I didn't know if that, um those words spoke to it better than not detracting from ecological and physical.
It's more specific.
So I think we can do a nice combination of, um you know, these bullet points, what we wanna keep and and what. It is in the paragraph above.
So I think to Kate's point, the natural features, half of the sentence is sort of covered elsewhere already. It's the.
That we don't have.
Very specific to me.
It is.
So maybe the, to make this really.
So, so again, this gets back to. Remembering that if you, if you make the bylaw too specific. Then n- nothing will get built because um you can have a site that has a small. You know, a small valley in it and they want to fill, you know, a small valley to, you know, for the septic system or something. The, you know, the response can easily be back, um brought back that, well, they're not, you know. The project doesn't conform to the existing topography, well, it would be impossible for the project to go forward without. Some change to the existing topography, so I think you just need to figure out the words that go. With that.
Well, what's the, okay, eh eh it's.
Conform to the existing topography um would mean somebody would come back and say, well, then, you know, they're doing cut there and fill there.
We could say to an extent practical.
So I mean, like, maybe going more to basic concepts, the concern around modification to topography. But it's just, eh it's an effort to preserve the existing landscape. There may be what, I mean, tha- that's something that I think is a good principle, could be reflected in the bylaw, but but like Elizabeth's saying. It would be, I think, very hard to be much more specific than that, because does that mean you can't do a retention basin, then does that mean things like that? Um I think it, I think it's a look and feel thing of of, does it, is the, is the. Look of the landscape preserve versus any specific requirements, I mean, topographical requirements would be saying, you know. You can't have X amount of earth removed or brought in, or um you can't change the, the elevation by X amount or.
Right, and we're talking about the ecological and visual qualities of the areas with the current bylaw says. So, it's pretty general, but it kind of gets to that, yeah, right.
I think the, the topography comes, it trickles down into the cost of development, so it's like, it ends up impacting the amount of open space they can provide. Or how many units they have to. Build, anyway.
And ra- and it's interesting that the, one of the bullets is consume less open space, cause that.
I think that meant like develop less land, I think that's what you're trying to say.
Oh, okay, and yeah, huh. So you could say, um, a project that attempts to limit um significant changes to the existing topography. I mean, now I'm, now I'm hearing what they're saying about.
I don't think we should make it a number.
Right, that that we might not. At all. Yeah, so at this point, are we changing anything in the purpose?
Yes, we're gonna add the.
So second sentence, add something about L I D and green building.
Okay.
All right.
And I'm just, I'm, I'm s- I'm sorry, guys, cause I'm a step behind, is L I D. That's, that's storm, that's a defined term from stormwater.
Yes.
Okay, as long as.
Specific type of.
Capitalized here and I.
Yeah, I know, it is a set of.
Wikipedia.
So it should be low impact develop, um. I think it's, is it low impact development?
I think that's.
Stormwater design or something, but I'll find out.
It seems to be a specific methodology of assessing stormwater impact.
Well, and designing your curbs and everything is a consequence.
Versus standards, versus something like that's a standard, list of standards or certification, but I'm also, I I need to know a lot about it and. Because and folks also were saying, why are we just doing L I D for? P R Ds, we should be doing it townwide. It's gets back to the stormwater by law.
This is our pilot for it, is the. Yeah, so I actually, I wanted to jump all the way to uh. Uh page four, uh in my, I had less than anybody else has something. And and it was this lot area frontage yard requirements, now, I think our existing um boundary, you know, limits. Are based upon side yard setbacks, right, for the. For the district. That when we say twenty feet today, that's like a side yard setback for residency, and if we have a. Is thirty feet would be a residence A side yard setback.
Side yard setbacks in all districts is fifteen feet.
Oh, it's only fifteen, okay, but I I just was again worried about like increasing it to fifty feet, that could really have an impact on. Let's say if we have a one acre P R D, fifty feet in all directions, it gives you a pretty, you know, tight. Building area and no place for central open space.
Exactly.
So I don't like this change personally.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you.
I do like the buffer concept, twenty-two, ten-two-five-five down below. Which just kind of legislates what we already negotiate, but.
I wasn't sure about this, like, what exactly?
Effective buffering and screening, I mean.
Is it where there's a developed structure at, a- along that property line or is it along all property lines or? Do you know what I mean?
As written, it's just the. So anywhere there's an adjacent property is how I read that.
Yeah, so it should be really between structures and, it it really should have something about between built structures and.
Versus anyone else, you know?
Well, I think.
Because of conflicts with the neighborhood.
Because, eh, I think because you're saying, instead of having one house there, you, there's a potential. To be a cluster of buildings near your lot line.
Correct, that's the intent, um what I'd like the board to think about is you, you can say um. Between the P R D track and uh adjacent existing residential developments. So not just, you know. But something that uh has been brought up. For the last few P R Ds, um over the past couple of years is the concept of that. Twenty, you know, that twenty foot. Or thirty foot setback area, have that be of an actual buffer. Um and that it does not get calculated into the required open space.
That's intriguing, espec- eh especially because you can see that, that being turned into. Exclusive use areas and things like that, that it's, I, I mean, it doesn't end up really serving as a buffer. Seems.
I mean, you can see that later on in the ten dot two dot six, there's a, the statement that's been added around. That, you know, land that's required for buffering shall not require, be qualified as common open space.
But what if that's, what if your open space that you're providing?
Is in the buffer, part of the buffer?
Adjacent to the buffer, I mean, they should be able to count that as part of their open space, if their open space is also providing buffer.
Like, had a lot and all the development is on one side, you're saying, you, you run the open space the full length of the other side and that, of course, runs the. Why would you not include it in that case? What you wanna avoid is, you know, the skinny strips being counted as.
Do you guys think that we already have that ability in the way it's written?
Well, the way that we, I think we had that long discussion about the shape and, yeah, you know, the, of the open space or has to. You know, fit the certain thing.
Two, so two questions for the, the buffer space. Um, does that have to be green space or can that include uh roadway, driveway? Anything like that? I, I, that might already be covered somewhere.
Way it's written, it wouldn't.
Not as Hallie has written it under, on page four, ten-two-five-five. It should be, include a combination of deciduous and evergreen trees and lower level elements such as shrubs and hedges.
But, but currently?
Currently, there's no.
There's no, no provision.
Developers kind of talk about it as a.
So I do kind of like adding that language for that purpose, so that you don't end up having a development that just says. Okay, I'll run a road around or, you know, depending on the size of the lot, run the road, the circle. To get the, the buffer space and build the houses along the middle and share, shared open space in the middle.
All right, so um something that we all need. All right, so, um, something that we all need to, um, just think about a little bit more for the next meeting. And I'll try and, and just send your thoughts back to me and I'll try and, and, and I'll talk with Hallie some more. See if we can come, come up with something. I think it's impossible for, to wordsmith.
Yeah, but I did wanna, I just stayed, there are a couple of, yeah, a couple other bigger items.
Can we just finish talking about buffering, so?
So, yeah, I just have my other second, my second question related to that. It is more of, I guess, uh, a legal concern. If we are now sort of specifically outlining this. In that way, is that, trying to think of a way to talk about this.
This only applies to future development applications.
Yeah, I had a different thought, well, I'll come back when it comes back to me, I had a different.
Okay.
I just don't wanna, um, like, there could be an instance, I don't wanna prioritize, um, impacts. Oh, of adjacent residential properties above open space. So if we say you can't put a road next to the residential property, I mean, there might be some instances where we, we. Looking at the balance of all the resources we're trying to protect, that might actually be what we think is the best. So I just wanna make, just say, you know, in general, we want to be, maintain flexibility to look at each site as it warrants analysis.
Yeah, I, it's a general comment, but it does go to this, this buffering and maybe the design principles in the stated in the next paragraph. You know, in inherently, a PRD is designed to bring flexibility to create an alternative form of development. And the, each lot, the demands of each lot will be different. I think about where I live, if it was a PR, PRD, and it's a long skinny, ve- very long skinny lot. It's a, it was about two house lots wide, if, for example, you had a fifty foot buffer on either side, it would have been undeveloped. Because it's probably about a hundred and twenty feet wide in total.
Yeah.
Um, and it's very long, you know, it's, uh, gosh, like a quarter of a mile long. So, so I think that we're better off in, in, within the confines of a PRD. Where, which is, you know, going through a planning review by this committee, by this board. Dealing, we're better dealing with more general principles, you know, I, I think what your concern is and what we, probably a lot of our concerns is. That we're seeing common open space, it's not being, that, that is of, that's essentially.
Scraps.
Lots of little scraps that are added up to meet that percentage. And maybe we can address that, you know, that separately by talking about the quality of the open, common open space as saying, you know. The preference shall be for unified, large space versus, you know, as opposed to, you know.
We already kinda have that in there too.
But do we need to do that? I guess my question, do, as, as it's written right now. If we, as a governing body on this, decide that, that. A developer has laid things out in such a way that they are accounting for skinny strips as open space. That that does not meet the requirement in our eyes, isn't that the kind of the final say of it? Like, there's no, there's nothing that outlines that we have to show explicitly that they meet X, Y, Z. This is, like, we view that this is not usable.
We have a whole bunch of criteria already.
No, I.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it doesn't say, like, we've talked before about saying, well, it needs to be.
Donut shaped or.
Size, dimensions and all this sort of stuff.
Say, we are, we already have that leeway within our.
Have the leeway, we just need to act on it and just say it, just say no.
On the criteria.
That, that does not meet it.
Or yes, if it does meet the criteria from the beginning.
Yes.
Okay, buffering, we, we've dealt with buffering, all right, so we're on to the next one.
Make a note of some of the things for when you talk to her, you know, about, it's hard to have it without her.
That's where that current bylaw has that leeway. The common open space shall have a shape, dimension, character and location. Suitable to assure its use for park, recreation, conservation or agricultural purposes. By at least all the residents of the PRD. So you, you, you already have that, you know, that statement.
Give this list of preferences, which are for other cool things.
I think that works to our benefit to have it worded as it is now.
Okay.
It, it, it gives you the ability to evaluate each PRD based on its location, its merits and its design.
Um, I think there's a couple of things in here that are not clear the way it's written, do you wanna hear them right now?
In, in current or?
The current, not Hallie's.
Oh.
Do you, okay, so the where you just were, Elizabeth, ten two nine, it's ten two nine now, common open space. That first sentence, all lands within the PRD track which is not covered by buildings, roads, driveways, parking areas or service areas. Blah, 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 or is not set aside for exclusive or shared use by the residents, shall be common open space. This says to me that whatever is either exclusive. Or shared use by the residents, whatever is not that shall be open space. Then the next sentence. No, not the next sentence. Somewhere else, it says that, um. That it's, that shared, areas of shared use by residents is okay to be used as common open space. Um, I can't find it now, I, I'll, I'll send it to you as a comment. But there, that was one thing I was not clear about is whether areas that were exclusively for shared use by residents. Is, can be counted as common open space. Um, the other thing was in. Where's the, the requirement that's like developed versus undeveloped land, it's fifty percent requirement?
Uh, that's in the beginning.
Two, ten two eight, fifty percent. Do people's yards count as area developed for residential use? Cause I think that we should clarify that too.
What's such an intent?
Sorry, it's ten to eight currently, area of residential development.
The area developed for residential use, including buildings, parking or other areas paved for vehicular use. Shall not exceed fifty percent of the full area of the PRD tract. So when you're saying developed for residential use, that, that list needs to be more specific about.
No, I'm just asking, like, I'm asking you if that includes yards, is it just meant to include impervious area?
I mean, to me, isn't it defining it there? Develop for residential use, including so buildings, parking and other paved areas for vehicular use. So those are the three things that comprise residential use.
Okay, now keep going.
Shall not exceed fifty percent.
No, but keep going.
Foot and bicycle paths and recreational facilities, including buildings wholly devoted to recreation. Shall not be counted in the calculation, in the calculating fifty percent limitation.
And.
So where do yards fit into there, or other?
Sounds like they're talking impervious, to me.
Well, what about patios? They're not, they're not paved areas for vehicular, vehicular use. They're impervious.
Isn't it part of the building?
What about a?
So let me, let me ask, um, let me ask the institutional knowledge. Um, I'll ask Marcia if the intent of that section was for impervious.
We just, yeah, I think we should say impervious, that's what it is.
But shuffleboard courts, because those are for recreational use, but they're impervious.
What are?
They're, yeah, those are exclusively recreational, so they would not count.
Same with your, um, what do you call when you hit the ball, inside?
Okay, we got it.
Ten to, ten to eight is that.
Yes.
All right, Matt, you say, Matt, what, what were you looking at, Matt?
I was going on to the next section.
So if, if Marcia comes back and says, yes, the intent of that was only the impervious areas. Is, is that something the board wants to consider changing?
I just wonder if it's supposed to include.
I thought that we get PRDs, sometimes they have no exclusive yards anyway.
Yeah, we, if I were to read this, I would not, I would assume that it was not meant to include. Yard space, either exclusive or otherwise.
Right.
Or leaching fields, or detention basins? Or?
I, I think it was always supposed to be impervious surfaces, but I, I will ask.
Okay.
All right, may I go to ten two five six, unit orientation and design. So this.
On Hallie's version.
Yes, this strikes me as, you know, it's sort of like the Westcocker Design Guidelines that have been put into here. Uh, in very compact form, but I, I, I once again am a little, uh, uncomfortable. Um, with this set of requirements. I also even uncomfortable with the, that the buildings should be oriented to maximize solar exposure. Uh, because that conflicts potentially with tree canopy maintenance. So I, I, I can see any number of issues with legislating this stuff or mandating this. I, I actually have raised this, this point with someone in the community about, you know, uh, solar ready buildings. That once CMLP, you know, becomes all green energy. Isn't it actually, if someone puts solar on their roof and they sell their wrecks, isn't that less green than the power they would otherwise buy? From CMLP? So is it actually ironically less green to put solar on your roof?
I don't know.
Well, all I'm saying is, I don't think that it's necessarily an improvement.
But, but, but they're just trading.
They're trading it, but, but CMLP does not trade their solar, they keep their wrecks, so.
I agree that there are alternatives for, you know, green energy within the town, even if you don't have.
Yeah, large scale solar.
Well, the point, just so we don't run too far afield of these discussions, is that there are, we're, we're talking about things like HERS ratings and the other. Um, yeah, standards, but we don't wanna dictate a particular method, right?
Well, yeah, and rooftop solar, I'm just saying, I don't wanna mandate rooftop solar here, uh, that's all.
Yeah.
Cause I don't see it as necessarily, and I, I don't wanna get into that whole discussion, I'll try to get into that discussion somewhere else.
House and things like that, that would contribute.
Oh, and I would like efficient houses, those are great, that's independent of whether you generate your own power.
See, it is, it is, I mean, yes, I agree that we probably, we don't need this detail. And I think focusing more on energy consumption and, and some sort of, you know. Design to minimize that would be much more important and then, you know, hopefully we'll all be, you know, getting.
Yeah.
Good green energy.
Okay, uh, ten two five seven.
But I, I wanna strongly preface all of these comments with our appreciation for her work.
Oh, gosh, no, well, we, this is great to get.
And it's hard that she's not here.
I know, I wish Hallie was here, I wish Hallie was here.
Let's, this is not gonna be the last time we talk about this, right?
Right.
We're not just.
No, but it is, that she's given us an opportunity to actually, you know.
Yes, I just wanna make sure.
Come to some conclusions here. All right, well, ten two five seven, I'm very much for it, but is this all we need to say?
I like ten two five seven.
Right, I like it too, but is that enough?
I don't know, I don't know enough about LID.
Or, um, or is saying it in the preamble enough?
Can we ask the, um, the, uh, Department of Public Works whether this is what we need to say here?
Uh, I, I will ask the town engineer.
Can, can the town, like, if, if the town engineer were showed something, could they make that determination whether this is indeed low impact development techniques?
Um, oh, yeah, definitely, but they may, um, be able to, cause there, there may be. Regulations already out there and, um, and I know that they are also looking at their, you know, construction standards, um, so.
Can we have someone come in and do like a lunch and learn for us? For LID, do you know lunch and learners?
Yeah.
But not lunch, it would be like now. Cheesecake and wine, um, I just hear broad-based enthusiasm for learning more about LID.
Sure.
I, I would say that there are these great, uh, seminars that are offered by the regional.
There wasn't one on LID.
Citizen planners, really? Okay, cause there have been, I, I, I have, yeah, well, there's also the annual conference and typically there's something at the annual conference.
Okay, yeah, so we'll keep our.
The one that town planners go to, or you think it's something else?
No, no, the annual conference, Citizen Planner Conference, which means, uh, citizens, but I mean, our planners also go.
Yeah.
And I really recommend it, Holy Cross, it, it's one day, you go there.
For the CTPS.
Yeah.
Were those the ones that all over the place?
Yeah, they're, they're all over, but then they have, um.
In the spring, they have this one at Holy Cross in Worcester.
Oh, Worcester, and that's.
And that's great, you just get there in the morning, they serve you food, you, you go, you get a whole bunch of these all in one shot.
Okay.
Yeah.
For ten two five seven, the stormwater one, only question for me would be the last four words. To achieve sustainability objectives, I, I feel like, again, we should be pointing to something either elsewhere in the bylaw. Or outside of the bylaw, not just have.
A broad statement like that.
Objectives, yeah.
What are those objectives that causes the question?
Exactly.
Um, okay, uh, question I'd have for the board is, do you feel like we have discussed two, five, eight already?
I'm gonna get input from, uh, Kate Hanley and Gary Kleiman, um, you know, if there is something similar to L, um, lead. For residential projects or whether there is an existing, something similar to this table.
Schedule that we can.
Okay, and likewise, do you think that we have already talked about the buffering?
You know.
That's included in the common open space first?
So the concern about this, tying into specific HERS ratings, it was the, the, the static recitation of years.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, one thing to think about, um, here is, so lead, um, my, I don't know how it's used in residential. But I know in commercial, I mean, it's a very expensive, I mean, it's, it's everything from, you know, it's not just. Do a blower test on a constructed building, right? Or it's, um, HERS rating is, I think, you plug in the, the R values of the insulation. And how, how well sealed it is, and at least when my house was built, there was a tax credit that I think largely paid for the testing process. Um, that can go to the developer, so that might actually be, uh, the, a mechanism that they appreciate. Um, because they can get, I mean, at the time, it was a two thousand dollar tax credit for the, which covered the, the testing costs. It's just something.
The, the problem I have with putting this type of chart in a zoning bylaw. Um, is that the actual, um, merits.
Right.
The numbers.
Yeah, everything changes.
Become debatable, and then, so somebody, you know, on the floor of a town meeting. Um, you know, this whole bylaw amendment will get, um, completely and, and hijacked. It is, and it'll come down to, well, in twenty twenty five, um, that should be twenty seven, not twenty eight. And so that's where, um, having it included in, in the bylaw for that reason. Um, the reason that if something changes, you, you then have to go back to town meeting and, you know, currently two thirds vote to change it.
Okay, fair enough.
And.
So I, I, I think there's a better way.
When's the last time this bylaw was, like, heavily adapted, probably more than ten years ago. So just imagine this sitting in there for far too long.
And we know we're gonna have to change it.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, though, if you, if you were requiring fourteen, I mean, that's, I mean, if you said twenty thirty and thereafter. I mean, fourteen, I mean, the average is a hundred, so fourteen's a pretty.
Pretty tight house, tight house. Yeah.
It's a house that actually doesn't have a door. It's a submersible.
Uh, okay, shall we go on to, uh, actually, in the same paragraph, there is the point about the percentage of open space. So I had last time proposed thirty three percent, she's got thirty five percent, do we, need to have a discussion?
Probably at the request of, you know, what, what they heard in the meeting, people were asking to be more.
Was that, were the breakouts going for?
I mean, people wanted ninety five percent.
With all the trees, just trees over tents.
Tents, I like that.
Treehouses. Uh, I don't know how to set that number to the right place.
Okay, so it's currently twenty five.
Five's, I don't know, what's the difference between thirty three and thirty five?
Two percent. Actually, it's more than two percent, it's two points.
Don't eat.
It's, it's like eight percent more.
I, so.
Right.
Fair enough, yeah.
Do we feel like?
I don't know.
And this is a totally honest question, the, the concern is about the, there isn't enough open space in these developments. there isn't enough open space in these developments? Or are you saying concern that, um, is this a bad question?
No, no.
I just thought that, I, I looked at the historical PRDs, the ones that didn't have, that didn't have an affordable housing primary objective. And they all went over that 33% hurdle, except for Milldam Square right up here. And it seemed like, okay, well, we've got a historic precedent there, and then you look at peer towns and we're all, you know, it's most, they're, they go up to 60% in some cases, but they're, they're in the 30s. So I just thought, okay, we're already, we, we've been really low at 25. If we just bump it to 33, it seemed okay to me, go from a quarter to a third, but.
I think we are trying to, um, make a smaller footprint on that.
Yeah.
You know, so for focus on preserving the open space means that you're going to have to make a more compact footprint. Well, and if that's the case, then you're going to have to change the height limit from 35. That's, yep, that's a good point.
Oh, let's do that.
Which, which I think in terms of, well, but in terms of.
Neighborhood conflict.
Wait, with some of the things that, um, Alan had kind of shown us, didn't it seem like that's the way we were going as?
I think Alan wants to build a 60 foot tower.
I've seen some really attractive 60 foot towers. I've seen, in Holland, I saw great ones, you get a nice park in the middle, there's a 60 foot tower, and the whole thing looks great.
Neighborhood character.
Okay, so overall, we, we think that, so, because I'm just thinking about how these numbers add up, we've got 50%, a max of 50% developable, impervious building driveway. We've got right now 25%, so I guess that relieves the remaining 25% could be exclusive use areas or, or other things that don't fall within the definition of common open space.
Well, they could be all wetland, for example.
Do all the numbers add up?
Around Concord, that's probably what would happen.
Those 50% can be upland of, of today.
Yeah.
50% has to be upland, right?
Right, but then the rest could all be wetland. And, you know, I think that that was the other thing Hallie did was did a, uh, took the chart that I had messed with and then applied a factor based upon the, um, the wetland percentage. Ended up with like negative open space, if you looked at, you know, the amount of wetland that was in, uh, Milldam Square here, there was 66% wetland. So I think what she was trying to point out was just that, um, you know, right now, we're not really ensuring that much upland open space. So.
Okay.
But anyway, I, I just feel like, um, it doesn't, it's not a huge deal between 33 and 35, but I just think 33 is enough personally and gives us more flexibility. And then it has good historic precedent.
So you, you would like it to be 33, or say?
I, I'm still fine with 33, I don't need to, see the need to go up to 35.
I wouldn't.
It's still.
Quite it too much, I was thinking about, I mean, it's not enough to move it up, but 35%. Especially if, if we think that, you know, given where there are places to do PRDs, that they would be moving more toward residents B and A. And you want to retain more open space in those areas. Then why not go 35%?
And I, I don't think it's going to be a very big challenge in those, in those districts.
In those districts.
Right. I mean, it's really, you know, anything that's in the future in residence C that would be.
Okay. I can be convinced to go either one of those numbers.
I mean, I, I, it might sound more. 35% might sound more attractive to, you know, the folks at town meeting who support this and, and they hear that as a a move, a significant move from 25% to 35%.
Well, I, it's not a make or break for me, so it's, it's okay.
And we might hear questions at the hearing, but I guess by that point it'd be too late, no, we could amend it, so.
What about increasing the height?
So where is that?
That's 10 two, it was 10 two seven, now it's 10 two five three.
Uh, would increasing the amount of open space be considered within the scope of the article? I would think that decreasing would be considered in the scope of the article, but not increase.
Wait, what?
So we could probably, you should probably put it 35% in the warrant. Because you can negotiate it down to 33 and still be in the scope of the warrant article. Because it's, it's less restrictive. But if you started at 33 and wanted to go to 35, you could not do that once the warrant's published.
Before town meeting, after it's published, before town, between January and April.
Right. So you can amend in one direction, not the other.
Oh, I see.
You mean?
So that convinced me, I'll do it, well, let's go for 35.
You mean the board can amend, or do you mean?
We can revise our warrant article after the publication of the warrant, but only within the scope of the article, meaning that you can relax things, you can't tighten things.
Right, but you're talking about pre-town meeting.
Right. And you can't, you could not do that on the floor of town meeting.
Right, all the way up until the floor of town.
And but then in the floor of town meeting, somebody could vote to amend it.
Right. Right, but I still don't think that.
You still have to be in the scope of the article because it's been noticed. And people, if they need to be aware that what's in front of the board, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, or the town.
Great to know. So let's go with 35.
35 it is, okay. And then uh, my biggest problems were these.
Touched on height and bounced right back off of it before you.
Yeah, I worried about going above 35, but, I mean, right now it says 35, plain and simple. The only districts where we have more than 35 are industrial.
From a construction perspective, I'm just wondering, so 35, you can fit a, that's, that can be a three story structure, right?
Milldam meets the.
And it can have a flat roof.
Oh, I don't, I don't know.
There's no, it's no mid peak or anything.
Or didn't have to.
It can be 35, flat roof.
So what's the question?
How tall is the Milldam Square?
I have no idea. I said, did, did it have to meet a 35 foot height requirement because of its, where? I, I don't know.
Yeah, I think so, and I think that, again, it's a flat roof, it's a pretty big building if it's 35 feet.
Yeah, and your, your question is three story building, should?
Well, what I'm wondering is, is there a number that gets you, makes it logical to add an additional floor, I mean, if, we're not talking about having more.
So I, I have a, I have a suggestion. Currently, the problem is, is under the PRD, it says height a maximum of 35 feet, there's no waiver provision.
Right.
So you can include the same language that's currently in the bylaw under height, which is 6211.
Which would give a special permit for, for relief from height.
It would, because it's part of the PRD, you don't need a special.
Part of the PRD, you can just say the planning board may grant relief from the above, um, height requirement. They find that the desire of relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the neighborhood.
I think that is the right answer. Okay.
Okay.
Let's do that.
We're in.
So in, in, in that actual section under 6211, it does, um, say, uh, the literal application of this requirement would be unreasonable because there are no reasonable alternatives available. I, I find that an unrealistic.
It's a very high bar.
It's a high bar.
It, it's an unrealistic standard to. So what is, I mean.
You could always make a shorter building.
Yeah, you know, I mean, so why, why have that statement?
Well, although, I mean, there was this, the one that, the special permit for the A and R lot on Highland Street that was granted because you know, they were saying it was like, it was basically a cliff from the back of the, the lot, and so that the.
Right, and, and they actually said, you know, a reasonable, you know, alternative is if they, if they didn't grant the waiver to 10B Highland.
Yeah.
That, um, it would be this short squat house that was actually uncharacteristic of the neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah.
It wouldn't fit in with the neighborhood if they met.
Be a one, one story flat roof house that then went downhill.
Yeah, so the special, the Board of Appeals did grant a special permit waiver to the height to allow.
So right now, I mean, by the way, we don't want to weaken that bar in most residential districts. You want it to be a tough, tough thing to go over. But in the PRD, we've got this sort of more comprehensive review that we're doing, and I think in that, in this, you know, mix, we could have this. Okay. We're almost done, well, okay, so density, so density bonuses, the, she's talking about, um, first of all, perhaps getting, giving bonuses for setting aside more open space. And I would say historically, we have not had to do that. Okay, the residents A or double A, you, we've been seeing 60% open space more, you know? So I don't think that we necessarily have to offer that up as a bonus. And then for housing diversity, the suggestion was to, you only get one additional market rate unit for every two affordable units, is that what it says? I think that's what she's saying, and there would definitely never be an affordable unit built if that were the ratio, because it, it, it takes.
Where's the language?
In 10 two eight two, it says, for every two units of dwelling restricted in perpetuity or every one unit for low income, one market rate dwelling unit may be added. And it, it basically costs more than one unit of additional to recover the cost of the affordable, in my experience.
You know, she, this is language from the town of Hudson, I'm curious to know why.
It's probably cheaper in Hudson.
Yeah, would definitely be cheaper.
You know, here it's 500K gap between.
It's just curious that that could make that much of a difference in terms of, because that's pretty bold. Well, I can contact the town planners there and see if anybody actually even use it. Yeah, just if you think that it's useful information for us to have for reference, because.
Yeah, I just don't see it.
I mean, it's just, you know, so I, what Marcia mentioned, um, you know, of, of, one of the meetings that she was in for you was kind of a while back, there was this trade off um, between, you know, well, we, we made some changes to the PRD requirements because we wanted more affordable, then we kind of lost this open space or whatever, you know, so with the trade off.
Nobody used it.
Yeah, so, you know, how important is affordable housing, talking, going back to what Elizabeth said about the four things, you know, which are most important and are they definitely rising to the top?
Yeah. I mean, right now, we do have a process. I mean, it hasn't generated a lot of affordable units, but we do have a process for granting bonus density. I mean, even then, developers, even with the terms we have, we're not getting many.
I know, and.
Density bonuses.
I feel like we should be.
I know, but it's not working that way.
Because, because affordable.
Tightening it up is certainly not going to help.
Affordable units should be in the same area where market rate units are, I mean, that's.
Yeah, that's the principle for the town, yeah. So I, I disagree with making those changes to that section.
Is there anything we could recommend looking into that would encourage? I, I can't remember if, if affordable housing is mentioned anywhere else, I, might only be in conjunction with density, right?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the only area we have to.
To really incent, uh, the development.
So it seems like we want to put a little star here that we want to come back and. Well, so the conversation kind of needs to focus, is the PRD to protect open space or is it to create affordable housing?
Yes. I mean, that's always been the thing with the PRD.
But I think it's.
It's two and one.
But here's the problem, so think of 430 old Bedford.
That ended up being open space.
But, you know, that he started with.
He started with affordability for the bonus units, but then it, it really got in the way of open space.
And, and so when, when it came down from, from that, from, you know, so eight, one unit had to be affordable, seven, one unit had to be affordable, six, one unit had to be affordable.
No, six, it wasn't doable, he said.
But that, but I'm currently, the, the bylaw, if.
In terms of what the bonus.
His basic density was four.
Right.
So if you went to five, one unit had to be affordable.
Right.
So there, 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 everybody has to understand, there, there is a real market cost, you know.
To do.
Benefit analysis, you know, that, you know, well, five and one affordable, it, you know. No, to do an, do an affordable, especially in this community, you, you probably are talking about one affordable, you get two additional market rate units.
I agree. I mean, that's.
Or why do it? So, um, I don't know what that, that calculation is, but.
Well, and we don't specify it in the PRD now, we say that you can get bonus density up to double based upon offering affordable housing, and we don't say how many you have to do.
Right, but to be able to do a bonus density, to have affordable housing, you're talking about having to utilize more area of the lot, you know, unless you're going up or you're going into, you know, a, um, a four unit single, you know, a four unit building. And so again, that gets back to that, if you proposed a four unit building, that's not compatible with the neighborhood, we don't have any apartment type buildings, so that's where that inherent conflict, you know, starts.
But we have used the PRD bylaw to create a bunch of affordable housing, Lally Woods, uh, you know, there's, there's all of these different ones that were under the same provisions of the bylaw, so we don't want to lose that.
Well, but, no, so that gets back to.
And that's other sections that are saying.
Section, so, you know, that's.
So you're saying to maybe just junk the bonus density?
No, I'm not, I'm just, I'm, I'm.
I think we just leave it.
Throwing out the, you know, the, the internal conflicts of the bylaw. So in this section, if you're, what is the special provisions, if you're a, a nonprofit entity, you know, you, and with 75% of the units will be, you know, affordable, then you, you get to disregard everything under 10 two six and 10 two seven.
Yeah.
Now, I do like, you know, right above that, so in talking about what, what we're incenting here, the proposal in 10 two eight three is uh, an increase of basic density if the units have all electric appliances. You know, or whatever we want to say there. I, I, I would like to make, uh, incentivize developers to build more energy efficient things, and I'd let them build more of them, because I guess my concern overall is let's not keep building very large houses, which I think are going to be very large consumers, and you can tell me how tight they are, but still, it's just. Yeah, and so if you can show me that you're not going to have a large energy consumer and that it's not going to be a large fossil fuel consumer, then I would like that to be rewarded, I would like people to, or developers to invest in that and be rewarded, and if there's more of those, I would feel better than if there were fewer, less efficient.
Well, that's, that's the carrot approach, but there's also the sort of more global stick approach, which is that I've heard that there's a citizen petition article being proposed for town meeting next year that would just outlaw the creation of any fossil fuel infrastructure for any new development. So it wouldn't be, you know, you wouldn't need this provision because there, it wouldn't even be a possibility.
Well, even, even if we made it more like, you know, efficient, if you can, if you can demonstrate, you know, what the impact, what the, you know.
Oh, well, that would be going back to.
Hasn't passed yet, so.
No, it's true.
And, and I'm not sure that's.
I mean, as long as that's.
Legally attainable, um, you know, as far as.
They claim there's already a couple of tasks that have done, so.
Yeah, but they haven't been implemented. Or even necessarily approved yet.
Or there may be a lawsuit, who knows? But just to talk about that carrot approach as far as, um, Hallie's 10 two eight three.
Yeah.
You know, some percentage of increase in basic density calculated if the units, if all of the units are, um, less than 2,000 square feet and have all electric appliance, I mean, you can, you, you can have more of those carrots in this list.
You know, I really like that, I mean, and just for consideration, throwing out the square footage piece, because you talked about the inherent conflicts in, in the bylaw, I mean, so it, to me, it makes a lot of sense to use the, the bonus density to create affordable because, I mean, the developers do the math, a third of their cost is in the land acquisition cost, if we effectively give them more land by allowing them to build an extra unit, then, I mean, their, their incremental cost to build their affordable unit should be, I mean, they, you could almost, I think, do one for one. I mean, a developer would tell you, you need 10 to one, but it's probably one to two to one. But then you have the issue that you run up against like the 50% of developable, you know, that you develop it, but if you're saying you get bonus density if it's under a certain size, then we hit the affordable from a couple of points, first of all, if you're, say you're building 2,000 square foot houses.
They're going to be more affordable, yeah.
Concord, I mean, I mean, 2,000 square feet in Concord is what, 800,000 to a million dollars?
You say affordable with a little.
More, he said we qualified it, more affordable.
We are less, less expensive.
Yeah, but, but no, it seems like it really, I mean, and that came up in the discussion we had on the, on the accessory dwelling. Yeah, but, but no, it seems like it really, I mean, and that came up in the discussion we had on the, on the accessory dwelling unit, that really did.
I mean, you could say, um, two thousand square feet, one car garage. And, and two thousand square feet, I mean, you have to specify.
Gross floor area.
Well.
It can't be living area, because.
No, you could say, like, in floor area ratio.
Yeah, yeah.
You could say excluding basements, opened and screen porch, desks.
Yeah, yeah.
And a one car garage.
Well, okay, but right now, we do count garages in the floor ratio, so.
Do, but.
No, but she's saying is a, a separate consideration.
Yeah, yeah.
That you allow, that, that you specify.
For the purposes of the PRD by law, you allow a.
But I'm wondering how those things would work in concert, like if you, if you do all of these three things. Include affordable, or, you know, maximum square footage.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not, I wasn't including the, the affordable unit side of it, because I think this is getting to that middle, that. That missing middle, a two thousand square foot unit.
If you just made the number twenty-five hundred, you wouldn't have to make the exclusion for the garage.
Yeah, but then, then you wouldn't, then you wouldn't get a one car garage.
You would just get a twenty-five hundred square foot unit with no garage?
Oh, maybe.
I'm okay with that.
A carport.
Carport?
It's a still a big house.
It is. My house is twenty-four by forty-two, so.
Yeah, okay, well.
My house is on, on, on paper.
I was just trying to avoid the exception for the garage, I just, you know, okay.
But I, I definitely want us to look into that, and, and I think that could be highlighted as a very attractive.
I like all these carrots, yeah, I, I like to do a multi-carrot approach.
I really like the square footage idea.
Yeah, so if, so, so basement, basement, because you have included basement, so not, you know, so. An, an opened, um, an open screen porch or duck doesn't get counted in square footage anyways.
Right.
So, I mean, you could do, okay, you could do, um.
Isn't it called condition space?
Twenty, twenty-five hundred square feet.
The, the thing is referencing, you can't limit the size of a dwelling unit in zoning by law in Massachusetts in living area.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, it's just spelled out right.
Yeah.
You, you.
Yeah.
You can't, you, no, you can't restrict the interior living space of the house, saying you can only have. A kitchen, a family room, a bedroom, one bathroom, you can't restrict it in that manner.
Okay.
But the statement's pretty much a blanket statement, though.
But you could say twenty-five, you know, limit twenty-five hundred square feet with, um, excluding a one car garage. With, with only a, you know, I'm not gonna wordsmith it now, but something where it says, you can have twenty-five hundred gross floor area. Um, which, uh, and, you know, excludes a one car garage, and it only has a one car garage or something, I don't know.
Gross floor area include, um, a basement?
Yeah, you can, yeah.
Right, so they couldn't say, that's not gonna be a finished basement when we know it is, so.
Well, if, if the basement doesn't have a ceiling height of greater than.
Seven.
Six, eight.
Six, eight.
Then it wouldn't be, so I, that, so that's just something to think about, and, um, I can try and wordsmith something.
I, I would keep it under twenty-five hundred.
I would do.
I would want to see a smaller number.
Twenty, well, twenty, twenty-five hundred, um. And that would include the basement and a garage, but you would specifically say, you know, twenty-five hundred square feet, a one car, a one car garage.
Oh, so the twenty-five hundred includes the garage space if you do it that way?
And the basement.
And the basement, okay, that's starting to get, that means your actual living space is probably in the mid teens. Uh, like fifteen, sixteen hundred square feet, which is, would seem cavernous to our parents, but are still, um, modest by today's standards.
I like. So, but I'm not sure how you incorporate the affordable component.
Well, and I think to your point, um, maybe we use other, you know, we're pursuing other ways of affordable housing and this. You know, this incentivizes.
Other metrics of.
Well, just like other aspects with the accessory dwelling units and things like that, so we don't have to try to do everything with this PRD.
So what do we could currently, and the way this has been edited, I'm a little confused, where, where is our current bonus density section?
Was it been cut out and replaced, or?
Ten, uh, currently, it's under ten two, uh. Uh, ten two three.
What is now the ten two three?
Yeah, there you go. It's talking about the diversity of structures.
Yeah, the old density. So the maximum.
Right, this is the old ten two three.
Ten two two, the maximum permissible density within a PRD shall not exceed two times the total number of dwelling units. Obtained through the app, application of ten two two one, which is basic density.
Okay, and it says if, if it's all market rate, you only get basic density.
Right.
Increases beyond, only if at least ten percent of the units are, are, are made available as described in ten two three and ten.
Right, and then we talked about alternating between SHI and moderate affordable for the additional units.
It's.
I think it's okay.
Wait, this is interesting, so this is saying you can go over basic if ten percent of the total units, so.
You don't have to have, right.
It, it, are, are qualifies as one of these categories of affordable. I'm just thinking.
So it's not a one for one or anything, you, you, you could just add a couple of units and even, you know, get a lot more density in theory. You know, in practice, we might not accept it.
Wait, but let's say, let me just say you had twenty units as your basic density.
Yep.
So if you were to build twenty-one, you'd have to make, you could only have nineteen market, and, and, and. And two would need to be affordable. If you built twenty-two, that, that would be your breakover point, where, right, where you've got. E- each of your two additional units that you're building would need to be affordable. It's not until you get to twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. That you start having, you, being able to build additional market.
Right, well, yeah, but that's the thing, it's like, you're not gonna go over your bonus density unless you're gonna go a fair amount over your bonus.
Right, that's why we saw that drop down.
Right, from seven to four, yeah.
So, I, I, I was confused, because I know we've, not too long, we've looked at a project that was one o, or, one over the.
Well, but.
Also confusing that the affordable unit means they are breaking even on that unit, that's not necessarily the case. Because that, what you're saying there is that basically the only incentive they would have is once they go beyond. Twenty-three and beyond, because they get that extra market rate one that they didn't have before, but that's under the assumption that the two that they've built, they're not making money on. But that's also not true. They are making money on those. We're allowing them to make less, incrementally less for those two units, but still making money. Yeah, quite, quite a bit less, I mean, probably, but.
Yeah, we're, we're talking the affordable unit at, um, Black Birch two, two hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Oh, wow, okay.
And whereas.
They are, they are not making money.
With the market, with the market, theirs were, were about a million dollars, right, so.
And that's deed restricted.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's at eighty percent.
And it doesn't count to our, towards our inventory.
That, that one does.
Oh, is that phase two?
Yes.
So it's not fifty-five and over, wasn't that the problem?
Oh, maybe, that might be, well, it's all fifty-five and over, so that might.
That's why he was gonna give the town a million dollars instead or something.
Right, because these don't count, but they are.
But they're, and they're deed restricted at the state level. Okay. So, uh, I think we've given you some input.
I'll try.
And I think we had a really extensive discussion of the PRD, thorough, thorough discussion, so I think that we've come to pretty good consensus overall. We'll see where we land.
Good luck, Elizabeth.
I just want to reiterate.
So let me, let me, oh, go ahead.
Well, just to reiterate, I really like the idea of tying bonus density to square footage, because it really kind of goes to exactly what we're doing with the PRD.
We'll try to do.
Concentrating the development, but allowing, you know, a creative model for it, and it would be a way to do it.
It'd be a nice way to do it.
Sacrificing opens base.
Right.
That, oh, that was, thank you for saying that, that was gonna bring me back to, we kind of tried to pass it, threw it out, but the proposed ten point two point eight point one. I mean, we can change the starting threshold instead of being a thirty-five percent, but doesn't that automatically do that in an organic way? I mean, you, you are limited on space, you, you are saying, I'm going to increase open space, which means you are now limiting buildable space, so you're. By, you know.
You're going to.
You're, you're making smaller units for each one you're adding.
Maybe.
I mean, I still.
Or you're packing them together more, or you're.
Yeah, which we looked at some good examples.
Yeah.
That was perfectly good, good fact.
But, yeah, I mean, you're right, it could be somebody who, who, you know, kind of sloppily just packs them together. But then that doesn't meet the character threshold.
Well. And I, I just, I think character now with the long range plan and things like that really has to take into account, you know, energy consumption and sustainability. And, and certainly stormwater and all this stuff, that, that seems to be what was big in the plan and, and from public comment and things like that.
Yeah, and I shouldn't say that, I mean, pack in sounded derogatory, and I wasn't saying that, I meant they could create a more dense pattern of development. Yeah, I think what we also, though, want is right sizing the units to future demographic requirements, which we're having trouble kind of encouraging. And the, the proposal does that.
That would be another, another, another carrot, um, is, what's the term in the building? Is it zero entry? Is it?
Oh, accessible.
Oh, oh.
Level entry?
Visitable, I've heard, yeah, you mean.
There's a term for.
Yeah, you know, for basically, for accessible units, right?
There's, there's actually no steps to, so you have Black Birch.
Universal accessibility.
Um, I think all of them have like four, three steps to get up to the front door landing. You know, two steps in the garage to get into the house, so, yeah, there's a term for.
For this kind of.
Some sort of accessibility?
Yeah, somebody actually brought that up at the.
That's what I was thinking.
At the, uh, in the discussion.
That supports age in place, yeah.
Yeah, I think, is it zero, it might be level entry or zero entry?
I didn't know that particular thing, but she, she definitely mentioned something about the.
There's somebody who was essentially asking if we could have like an ADA requirement.
Yeah, an incentive for, you know, complying with ADA requirements, options for older people over time.
Matt, going back to the. Smushing, smushing places together, it'd be similar to, I think we were always talking about that, the meeting last week. Uh, it turns out, I guess you lived across the street from where I live now, and that's a three unit.
Right.
In what appears to be a two unit building.
Space, yeah.
Could be made to look like a single unit if you really wanted to. So, I mean, there's ways to do that, and if this sort of incentivizes that. I guess I don't see a good argument to exclude it for now.
Another aging in place, um, something I read, I believe it's in, uh, is it in Scotland? You know, requiring a full bathroom on the first floor. And that's to allow aging in place. So people can, you know, there's like a, a bedroom and a bathroom on the first floor.
Okay.
All right.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask now, since there's at least four of you here, or I'll just, I'll have Nancy send out just a doodle poll. Um, to hold January seventh.
Okay.
As, um, like a last.
Watch, did she effort?
Isn't it already on our calendar? It's not, I have it on my calendar for some reason.
What, what's, sorry, what's January seventh?
January seventh is a planning board meeting.
Is it? I'm, I don't have.
That's what I thought, but.
Oh, it is, you are right, there is a meeting January seventh.
We'll hold it then.
Okay. Um, all right, so at this point in time, you have January seventh, December seventeenth, and December tenth.
Excuse me, and December tenth will be busy. Possibly.
I think that one is going to be lengthy.
Um, and just, um, procedurally, based on your, on your meeting schedule, we are looking at an alternative location for your December tenth meeting. That's exciting. So we will let you know, it will either be Harvey Wheeler or the Throes School.
Okay. Ready to move on to minutes? Move on to minutes? October twenty-second minutes, I think those are the only ones that we actually received.
Yes.
Um, I sent Nancy two comments, one was page two, second paragraph. I suggested that it say she rather than I. Um, and then on page four, second paragraph, uh, in the board's comments section. Mr. Ruda spoke at length in response, instead of Mr. Ruda spoke in length and responsive. Not very consequential, but.
Accuracy is important.
Any other comments on the minutes? Did I get a motion?
Um, I moved to accept the minutes as of October twenty-second, as amended. October twenty-second, nine, two thousand nineteen.
Second on that?
Second to that, yeah.
All right. All in favor? Okay. Committee liaison reports. I went to the chair's breakfast, um. Not a whole lot to report, I mean.
How are the other chairs?
The chairs are doing great.
Good.
Trying to think of what, any, any real breakthrough items that I heard there. I mean, there was some recitation of the dates that are coming up for, you know, there's gonna be a, a town meeting preview meeting. Where we need to go through the list of our, uh, what we expect to bring before town meeting, and that's in early December, so. There's gonna be a little prep for that.
It's Saturday, December seventh.
The seventh, so that's before our next meeting, and I think I'm tagged in it on that one. But I'm gonna need to work with you, Elizabeth, to just make sure I got the full list.
Is that everybody previews their articles? Anyone who has an article goes to this meeting?
Every, every committee, yeah, brings their article, so that the moderator knows what's coming, uh, roughly. Okay, so that, that's probably the most consequential thing that came out of the chair's breakfast. And I also just wanted to mention, I met with a member of the public, Alice Kaufman, who told me about. Uh, this citizens petition by law, uh, possibility of, uh, no new. Natural gas or, you know, any fossil fuel infrastructure for new construction. And so that's, that's something, you know, he, she was curious, because she said, I mean, I, I had said, I think that it's gonna be a general bylaw if that goes, it's not a planning. You know, zoning by law, so we wouldn't be the ones that would be owning it, but on the other hand, we'd be likely to have to weigh in on it before town meeting.
Um, I'm not, not sure about that.
Well, she said that the planning board in Belmont weighed in on it for the similar by law that they had. Because I, I raised that question as well.
It, it's, it's, it's a sustainability, and, I mean, it's not a, it's not a zoning land use. General by law.
Uh-huh.
And, and I don't know the practices of Belmont, I mean, the Belmont Planning Board may weigh in on every single article, I don't.
Yeah.
I don't know, so whether the, uh, planning board in another town weighed in on something similar, I don't. I, I would have to know more about that.
Okay.
Well, we may, I mean, if, if that came forward, we might decide that we want to speak in, in favor or against something like that, just. As, you know, stand up. And test to it. And the only reason I say that is because we have been trying to weave more, um, uh, you know, sustainability elements through ours, so we could. Talk to whether that would be complimentary to our zoning.
I think the board would have to have a discussion once it's written.
The, the other, she also said that there are two other bylaws that, um, might come forward, one is. Uh, that would require seller disclosure of the energy efficiency of a unit at the time of sale, so basically you'd have to tell. The buyer what your hers rating was, I think. And then the third, which is still tentative due to possible conflict with the stretch code, would mandate a maximum hers rating for all new developments. would mandate a maximum HERS rating for all new developments, so.
Is this coming from the climate?
Well, and that was a question that I asked back afterwards, which was why aren't these coming from our town committees? I haven't gotten a reply.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
I mean, we have, uh, multiple town committees that are on these issues, so.
Right, with.
And we have a town sustainability director, you know, this is a citizens' initiative, so.
Um, is there, when the warrant comes together, does an attorney look through it just to see what the legality of everything is?
We just got one of those today on ours.
Town council reviews everything.
Including like the citizen, whatever is.
Yes.
Oh, really?
Yes.
And so if it's, if they see a problem, does, does that just get noted in the whole, the warrant? Or does, does somebody actually take it out?
Um, no, once it's submitted in the warrant, it is in the warrant, if it's a citizen's petition, it is in the warrant.
Yeah.
Um, town council will review it, and I think it was.
And that can happen.
Two years ago, you know, council, the town council, um, stood up and, um, and, and usually that happens before town meeting, and, and the petitioner is informed of town council's opinion, so, um, I believe, was it last year, there was a similar article and, um, the petitioner withdrew it, was allowed to make, the town moderator allowed the person to make a statement, but they withdrew the article.
Yeah.
Um, just briefly, it's, it's CPC busy season, this is when we have our sometimes weekly meetings, because we have all our applications in and we're deliberating, um, it's kind of an exciting discussion because we're oversubscribed for requests by about eight hundred thousand dollars, so we have to make real.
Real cuts.
Which you can't just give everybody a five percent haircut, we have to probably exclude some, you know, some big projects who are balancing the direction of the select board, who provides us a little priority list and, and other boards that weigh in. We are also, um, we also have an, an interesting issue that we've had town council weigh in on, um, on funding for, uh, buildings that are owned by religious organizations and, and putting funding to that and recent, you know, recent Massachusetts case law, so it's been an interesting committee to be on this round. If anybody has questions about the projects, which ones are, in the, uh, in the running, it's a little premature, we've sort of identified the ones that we think are safe bets, which are things like the contribution we make to the, uh, regional housing services, and it's, it's a small portion that has a big, big return. For example, we've got a, we've got something backed like two hundred thousand dollars in grant money through that office, and we make about a twenty thousand dollar investment per year, so. Um, there's a meeting next week where we will probably get much closer to a definitive list and.
What's your deadline for that? When do you, when do they try to make it?
Goes into warrant.
So, um, we get it done in, by the, I think by the end of December.
Okay.
Okay, any other reports? Okay, uh, public comment?
Actually, I do have a comment, Susan Bates, um, Concord Green. Uh, my colleague who attended the forum said it was so informative, and she's not, because, well, this isn't one of her committees, she doesn't, you know, keep on top of what's going on, but she said it was enormously valuable to her and she learned a lot, so.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks for that, people.
I'd like to thank Matt for preparing everything and, and thinking about the breakout sessions, I think it worked out really well.
Yeah, presentations for you.
Well, great, all right, well, thanks everyone, and we're ready to adjourn.
And happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, 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 oh.
Is it possible, I, based on the rules for the board, for us to have a, like.
Holiday party?
Together, like at a restaurant or something like that, and it not be like.
You can have a holiday party. Town clerk has already provided, you know.
Funds?
Has already provided, um, the opinion, which, you know, comes from the attorney general. You can have a holiday party, you can have, you, you.
Could have fun.
Talk about, you can talk about.
Everything else.
You can talk about, uh, the impeachment hearing. Yeah, you can talk about, uh, your, you know, your Christmas vacation, um, but you, but you can't have a holiday party, yes.
I make a motion to nominate, uh, head of committee for holiday.
Picking a place and a date.
I brought it up for that purpose, so yes, I will, I will organize that.
Okay, great, um, and, uh, yeah, the, actually, the West Concord Advisory Committee does have one.
Can we crash there?
You can crash it, you can crash it, it's gonna be at, um, I was just trying to get the date here. No, no, it's across the street at, um, the, the, what was it, Saltbox Kitchen. They've got a table that has been reserved, um, it's basically stand up around the table, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Large table.
Yeah, exactly, we just take over that table, it's, it's happened in past years already, so, uh, anyway, uh, there we are. And what's the date? It's not here.
Are they mad at me cuz I didn't, I wanna rezone instead of giving them the grocery store?
That, you, you can't talk about that, that party. Okay. Um, all right, I, I can circulate the date, I'm sure, for the West Concord Advisory Committee, but that, that might be an option.
Wait, I don't understand, I'm not on that committee.
They're a subcommittee of ours, so we are fully in our rights to crash their party.
We're like a circuit judge? Could you show up and, yeah, circuit judges.
Yeah, all right, or if we wanna have our own venue, we could, sure, we're gonna be exclusive of that, okay.
All right, okay, cheers, everyone.